House come to order. Members are in their seats, Dr. Filer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Welcome this evening. We've got a full agenda, so I'm gonna hop right in, give you a brief overview, and then we're gonna get into it. We've got a few pop-ups this evening. We've got three of those. We'll get to those right off the bat. After that, we're going to bring up Dr. Dennis Thomas, who's the Commissioner of the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference, to give us a preview of the upcoming MEAC tournament next week. We have Ruth Jones Nichols here from the St. Paul's Advisory Committee to present some initial work that that group has been doing on inclusionary and affordable housing. Have the first opportunity this evening to bring A.C. Langston, our new Environmental Sustainability Manager, in front of you to talk about her new role with the city. A.C., how are you? Good to see you. And to talk about her goals for us achieving the objectives inside our Climate Action Plan. Greg Patrick is here to provide us the annual mid-year budget update. George Homewood with Planning will come up and talk about some of the hot topics inside city planning. We'll see where we are at that point for council interests. We do have a pretty full closed session as well, so can't guarantee anything, but if we still have some time, we think we have some time, we'll do some brief council interest. And then we'll go into closed session for disposition of property and a conversation on boards and commissions.
I think we need to flip it, make sure we do council interests. We've come down here three or four weeks. I think you guys need to hear from us as well. So let's get it in there.
Sir, all right, well, let's get rolling. The few pop-ups first. So I have a couple of staff announcements to make at the opening tonight. First, I want to thank the men and women with Norfolk Fire Rescue. As you all know, I came in right near the tail end of a process we were going through in the search for Norfolk Fire Rescue's new fire chief. I wanted to be very respectful of that process, but also wanted to be thorough myself in sort of evaluating the candidates that had been on the final shortlist. That delayed the decision, and for that, I do apologize. But, you know, I felt it was very important to, you know, let me have an opportunity to meet with each of the potential candidates and get a feel for that. With that said, we have made a decision, and I'm pleased to announce this evening that Norfolk Fire Rescue's next chief is Mr. John DeBaco. So John is here this evening. Just a little bit about John. Chief DeBaco's been with, spent more than 40 years in fire and emergency medical services. He joined the city of Norfolk in 1992 as a firefighter/paramedic. And during his tenure with Norfolk Fire Rescue, he has held positions in training, administration, and operations. Most recently, he's been serving as the Assistant Fire Chief overseeing paramedic services. John has multiple certifications, served as an adjunct instructor for the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, and has instructed firefighter training programs across the Commonwealth. John's a native here of Norfolk with his wife, and they have five children and seven grandchildren. And John, I look forward to working with you, sir. Thank you for being here. In addition, I also want to take a moment. I see Chief Brooks here, Mike Brooks. Mike, I want to thank you for serving as the Acting Chief during this time throughout the search process. I really appreciate your willingness to serve in the acting capacity. I always appreciate your dedication to the department. I look forward to still working with you. Chief Brooks will, Acting Chief Brooks will now return back to his role as Deputy Chief. So thank you for everything you've done. Also, as you all know, last week, we said our goodbyes to Stephen Hawkes, who had been with us for quite some time in human services. We are in the process of doing that search. So in the meantime, we need an Acting Director for Human Services. With that, it gives me great pleasure to announce that Denise Gallup, who is the current Assistant Director, will be stepping into that position. Denise, thank you. Denise has been serving as the Assistant Director since joining Norfolk five years ago. She's got 25 years of experience in human services in both the public and the private sector. Prior to coming to Norfolk, she served as the Assistant Director in Hampton for 10 years. And she also served as Director of First Home Care and Development Programs for at-risk children and their families in use across the country. Denise, I just want to say thank you for your willingness to step up into this while we're doing our search. Acting positions, much like interim positions, I'm familiar with Acting Deans in my old role at universities. They can sometimes be thankless positions, but they're extremely important. And I thank you for offering the stability to the group while we get through the search process. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda. Unfortunately, we are at the position where I do believe it is probably important to have an overview to council on our coronavirus action plan. So with that, I'm gonna call up our Emergency Operations Coordinator, Jim Riddick. Jim is just gonna talk to us a little bit. Obviously, it's early, right? I don't want everybody freaking out, right? It's early yet, right? But I think we all recognize that the likelihood that this does show up in Virginia is probably somewhere well north of non-zero. So with that, I think it was important to get Jim here sooner rather than later to give you an overview of how we're looking at this and what we're doing inside the administration to prepare for this should it happen. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and Dr. Filer, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on the coronavirus. I can tell you right now that we have a strong plan. This plan has been built from previous incidents, from the swine flu, Ebola, Zika, all these things that we've gone through before. And now with the current guidance and with direct correlation with Dr. Lindsay and her public health team, our plan is solid. So we're going through that step by step. Let there be no confusion that Dr. Lindsay is the incident commander of this incident. They are the subject matter experts. And so we have a unified command setup, so we're working side by side. Our role is that of a logistical role. So whatever their needs are in their mission, we support them every step of the way, whether it's transferring medicines and prophylaxis to dispensing sites or providing security at dispensing sites or whatever it is, it's all spelled out in our plan. And so we're going through that. We're also scheduling weekly meetings to go over the latest updates as the virus continues to spread. So you'll receive more updates on that as we develop incident action plans on what we're gonna do for the next seven days to address this issue. But through our planning process, our collaboration and coordination, we have unity of effort, we have unity of message. I know Lori has been working with the other regional PIOs and the Public Information Officers for Public Health to make sure that accurate, accessible information is going out to the community. So with that, our primary focus is to replace fear with facts. The factual information from the Virginia Department of Health, the information from the CDC is available on our website. So folks can go to norfolk.gov to get that latest information. And also a copy of our plan. Our plan is not meant to be secret. We're transparent, and it would make sense if the community understood what our plan was and all its complexities. So our plan is also available online. If you can't get to the website, we encourage folks to contact 877-ASK-VDH3. That's 877-275-8343. And that line is answered by our friends of 211 Virginia, and we'll be able to answer your questions pertaining to the coronavirus. And we also encourage folks to register for Norfolk Alert in case there are any messages we need to get out directly to the community. Sir, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Well, obviously, as events progress and as situations dictate, we'll be back in front of you as frequently as necessary to continue giving you updates, whether it's Jim or one of the members of the action team that's on this. The other thing I wanted to mention just briefly before we get into the full presentations, it sent all of you an email with the disappointing news about Zaxter, the company that was running our PACE bike share program. They have informed us that they are suspending the program here in Norfolk. I just wanted, you know, reiterate to everybody that we're committed to this. We're committed to that form of a transportation mode for the city of Norfolk. And so we are going to put out an RFP immediately to seek another company that could possibly provide ride-share options for us in that space. And then we'll work with Mr. Pischko's office and the city's attorney's office in procurement to get that process going as quickly as possible.
Yes, all right, Ms. Graves first and Ms. Doyle.
Are there lots of options, companies that do the same thing?
Yeah, I don't know that I would use the phrase "lots", but we do have alternatives. And so we will be, it's an emerging industry, so there are always others getting into it. But I think we do have other options, yes.
So while I know the city had an arrangement and a contract with Zaxter/PACE, the city was not funding us in any fashion. But there were sponsors in the community that contributed to PACE to have this program implemented within the city. So I would recommend that the city, if they could, reach out to their sponsors to inform them that Zaxter is no longer here so that should they receive an invoice for their sponsorship this year, that they don't pay it. And look closely at their contracts so that people aren't being asked to pay for services not being provided. Now, clearly, we're not the ones that went out and solicited the provider, the sponsors. But I do think it's at least in part our responsibility to not only inform the citizenry like you are now, but for those sponsors who may simply not be watching today, they need to know. So I would just ask us to take on that proactive responsibility. I've spoken with Amy Inman, Office of Transit, who was working with Alex today in Bernard's office. So I think that that's a recommendation I would make.
Yeah, great point. And we'll absolutely do our best. Whether we can track folks down specifically or not, we will get the word out so that folks can at least reach out on their end. Okay. With that, I want to call up John Ramstein. John's here to introduce Dennis Thomas. Wonderful event. It's gonna activate the scope all of next week. It is March Madness time. So, John, thanks for being here.
Sure thing. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager, my pleasure to introduce Dr. Thomas. We're in year five of a potential six-year relationship with the Mid East Athletic Conference Basketball Tournament, men's and women's. And it's been a great relationship, not only with the tournament, but a great friendship with Dr. Thomas. Quick anecdote about Dennis, who grew up in Mississippi, went to Alcorn State, played football there, was a really good offensive lineman at Alcorn. And for a time, thought that there might be a pro football career in his offing. And he happened to go up against a player named Ed Too Tall Jones in one of his games and quickly realized that he had to apply himself to his studies after that game and carved out a nice career for himself as a Commissioner of the MEAC. And so it's been a pleasure working with Dennis these years. And so with that, I'm gonna let Dennis come up and tell you about the tournament that's coming up next week. And we're really looking forward to having he and his member schools here in Norfolk again. So Dennis, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. How's everybody doing? John, thank you for that noteworthy introduction there, telling the world about my football career, non-career, against Too Tall Jones. That's really kind of you. But I wanted to come by. And first of all, I want to thank Mayor Alexander and the City Manager, City Council members for supporting the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference. And you all have been supporting us for quite some time now. Norfolk has been a tremendous whole city. The merchants, restaurants, hotels have been very hospitable, very friendly. And our fans have commented on the kind of just hospitality extended by the city. And that's important because they keep coming back when they feel good about the way they've been treated. And all indicators have been on the upward trend. And I have to commend several people, John particularly, and seven venues and his staff. They've been very professional, they've been very competent, and fan-friendly. And as you all know, the public will let you know if something is not going right. And we have very few negative comments regarding their experiences here. And that is absolutely tremendous. Now, I know who to call when there are some situations that arise, but there hasn't been any. And we don't look for any on next week. As you know, we'll have 22 teams, 11 men, 11 women in your city, staying in your city, and along with the fan base from Dover, Delaware to Tallahassee, Florida. So we have a big footprint. And so we've been very pleased. The big dance will be broadcast on ESPN2 on Saturday at 1:00 p.m. We've been very pleased at, and working with Visit Norfolk. I guess you're showing the schedule of events up there. You'll see all of that that's happening. But one of the most important things for us and for me as Commissioner is our community engagement. It's absolutely critical for us. One of the most impressive events is Read with the MEAC with the elementary school systems in the city of Norfolk. And the elementary school who reads the most books, they get a $3,000 award. In second place, get $1,500 award. So the total award is $5,000 to encourage students to read. And we think that's very important. Also, we have a youth clinic at the Quark Center. And we have all of our head coaches, men and women head coaches, for about three hours, four hours, instructing the youth in the Norfolk community. And not only are they talking about basketball and sports, but they're talking about academics. They're talking about what you need to have in order to play collegiate sport. That is just not, if you play basketball well, then you can get into an institution. That's absolutely not true. And we try to convey that to the students, that you have to do well academically. You have to excel academically. And those are the two activities in terms of the youth of the community. We also have College Fair. Worked with Lori Crouch with getting all of our institutions to come in, the enrollment management offices, the admissions offices. And we've actually awarded scholarships on-site to those talented students within the city of Norfolk. So that's absolutely impressive. And we've been tracking students who actually attend other universities outside the state of Virginia. So we've been very pleased with that as well. Now, we have a multi-year contract with ESPN. One of the most important things to us is to brand the city of Norfolk. If you schedule a permit, we have North Carolina Central playing North Carolina A&amp;T on ESPNU at 7 o'clock this coming Thursday. So if you get an opportunity, tune in. And one of that game probably will be number-one seed or number-two seed. But tune in and watch. I think Kirk Crouch has done an excellent job in promoting with the 32nd spot for the city. So the world can see all the great things that are going on in the city of Norfolk. So if you get an opportunity, please tune in. Also, we recognize the military, first responders, all that's involved in the programming that we have during the week of the basketball tournament. So I encourage all of you, I know you're busy, or you've got the other J O Bs out there, but you need to stop by and see the enthusiasm and see all the camaraderie, all the pageantry. There's a lot going on in the city. And people coming from all over. And one of the most impressive things is that we haven't had any problems with the MEAC fans. You know, we monitor this and the law enforcement community. That's an area that we don't want any problems. And we haven't had any problems. And that's a good thing. And there's a reason why. Obviously, I don't believe in osmosis, but I do believe in planning and how you treat people. And I think that the planning that we've been involved with our fans and the law enforcement community, it's been absolutely great. It's been absolutely great. So with that in mind, any questions that you'd like to ask of me at this time?
Ms. Graves?
So thank you so much for the MEAC. I remember the first year that you guys came, and it was such a wonderful event. Having come back year after year, it really, the fans are great, and they are very enthusiastic. With the crowd that you draw, what I would like to, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Tommy and I are co-chairs of the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. So I'm gonna ask for some free publicity in that overhead over there that you guys have in the scope that we could make good use of that as one of your rotating announcements for 2020 Census because that comes up every 10 years and is very important. And so we're trying to get the word out in as many ways as we can. And so we would greatly appreciate if the MEAC would partner with us and give us a little free pub there.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if I have a choice in that. But absolutely, we would do that. All we need is the information, the video information, to put it up. And we'll start it on Tuesday with the tournament and run it all the way through Saturday because it's important. People don't know a lot of federal dollars are involved based upon the numbers, the census.
Mr. Riddick, then Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Smigel.
One thing that, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. One thing that always concerns me as far as Norfolk is concerned is parking tickets. Now, if somebody is buying a fire hydrant, certainly you might need to tow it away or something like that. But I don't think we need to be overzealous when it comes to parking tickets because you can have a great time at the tournament, and you come out, and you got a $75 parking ticket on your windshield for something that's minor or something that can be overlooked. And so, and I say that every year. Also, and it's something that I know we can't control, predatory towing. You got these towing companies, and they'll come up, they'll see a sign that might say "No parking", or something like that if it's there. And the next thing you know, the car is towed away. If it's our sign and it's not something that's going to impact traffic flow, I like to see us put a tag, I mean a bag, on some of these parking signs because it's predatory towing, and it's not cheap. It is not cheap. So, and parking, this year, we've changed, you know, a lot of things downtown. And I was asking somebody last week, I was talking to the council, how long the tide ran and whether, you know, some people might want to park at Harbor Park and ride back and forth for free. It might be too late to explore that. But I'd just like us to be mindful of those things.
Thank you for those comments as well.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
I just want to say I truly enjoy the Education Day because I go every, just about every year. I think I missed last year. But Ms. Crouch, she pumps me up. I am prepared. I scream, I yell, I jump. I'm very excited about the scholarships that you give away right there on the spot. Number two, I get to see the scholars who I've taught over the years, who are now going on to college. And number three, I get to request special music by the DJ to pump me up even more before I have to speak before all of these scholars. And there are many of them. They fill the house. So to you, Ms. Crouch, to the city, to the MEAC, thank you so very much for Education Day. It does a lot for our children here in the city of Norfolk. And I am most appreciative, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Commissioner, thank you again. We really do enjoy having this here. I think you remember last year, I mentioned this. I'll mention it again. I thought it was really great. A couple of years ago, I got a random phone call from our head athletic director in the school district asking if the gym in my school could be utilized for practice as teams were coming in. And I don't know if that need is still there, but it was great to have one of the women's basketball teams there. Some of my players were allowed to watch them and see them while they were practicing, and it was a unique experience for them. But I'm sure Steve Suttmiller and Dr. Bertsong, with the partnership with the school system, if there's a need again, I can't speak on their behalf, but I thought it was, as a principal, it was a really unique experience for my players to have that. So we've got a great basketball court at our school. I'm sure there are high schools and other ones as our basketball seasons are ending, and they're available and open for teams to, you know, utilize.
Thank you. I want to emphasize, Dr. Bertsong. Obviously, she's just coming on, and she was very supportive of Read with the MEAC and all the educational components that we have implemented during the basketball tournament week. So I was very pleased, very pleased.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Thomas. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Graves to introduce our next guest and talk a little bit about the presentation.
So, I always kind of wanted to do this. This is pretty cool. Our presenter, my next presenter is coming from our St. Paul's Advisory Committee. And she is no stranger to you. If she is a stranger to you, you've had your head in the sand. Ruth Jones Nichols is a wonderful advocate in our community, a wonderful community and public servant. And I didn't realize that she was actually from the beach. I won't hold that against her. Born in Norfolk, but raised in the beach, graduated from Bayside High School. So we won't hold that against you. But she does so much great work. She has her undergrad from William &amp; Mary and her master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania, and recently received her PhD from Catholic University in Washington, DC. So if y'all haven't figured out, that means she's smart. But not only is she smart, she has a real heart for people, and she has a real heart for the underprivileged and the underserved. And as we were doing our work in the St. Paul's quadrant, the topic of inclusionary housing came up. And it's one of the topics that we talked about in our council meetings. How do we ensure that we have affordable housing throughout the community, throughout the entire city of Norfolk? Not just in patches here and there, not just concentrated in one area. People should be able to live in clean, working, sanitary living conditions that are affordable throughout the entire city of Norfolk. So when we started talking about... throughout the entire city of Norfolk. So when we started talking about inclusionary housing, the idea for a subcommittee came up, and that would kind of be like a committee for the council, right? That would, that subcommittee came up for inclusionary housing, and Ruth said, I'll chair it. I think she volunteered. She might have been voluntold, but she said, okay. And being the executive director of the Food Bank gives her great insight to the needs in the community that we serve, hearing a lot of the issues that people face, housing being one of them, affordable rent. That is something that is very, that's very important to individuals and is something that we need to tackle. So she took on the responsibility of being the chair. I initially attended one meeting and I backed away. And the reason I backed away was because I didn't want to cityfy it, if that makes sense. I didn't want to come in with a city council position or what we can or cannot do as a council. It was to give the team some freedom to have ideas and to think freely and to not be contained, and then put all of that together and say, these are the things that we're hearing, these are the concerns that we have, this is how we should proceed, and here's the basis for it. And if you know anything about Ruth, when she brings you something, she doesn't just bring you a pie in the sky, she brings you the basis for it. She does the research and she has foundations. So Ruth is going to come and she's going to present on behalf of the St. Paul's Advisory Committee, the findings of our subcommittee on inclusionary housing, Ruth Jones Nichols.
Mayor, members of the city council, city manager, guests and friends, I am indeed Dr. Ruth Jones Nichols and the president and CEO of the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore. I am delighted to be here tonight, not just to represent the Food Bank or over 160,000 individuals that we serve each year, individuals who oftentimes struggle to put food on the table. But I am delighted to be here tonight as a representative of the St. Paul's Advisory Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Now, Councilwoman Williams Graves gave such an eloquent introduction, and she talked about my heart for serving. But what she didn't say was, at one point in time, I was a part of a household that needed the types of services we'll discuss today. That is a part of what drives me to do my very best at all times, and it is the passion and the reason I bring to the table whenever thinking about creative solutions that can better serve our neighbors. So tonight, I will present to you the recommendations from the St. Paul's Advisory Committee. But before doing so, I'd like to draw your attention to a report that the Food Bank actually released in September of last year. The report is called Hunger and Food Insecurity: The Causes and Consequences. If you look at that report on page four, one of the things that you will see is, in the city of Norfolk, there are over 45,000 individuals who struggle with food insecurity each year. Last year, there were about 7.6 million meals missing from their tables. Although the Food Bank was able to close the meal gap by about 61%, that still left 2.98 million meals that our community members did not have. If you look at page five of that report where it states, mapping food insecurity, you'll see some things that are very familiar. Three census tracts that sit next to each other, one that is disproportionately impacted by food insecurity. What we realized as an organization was that we couldn't simply eliminate hunger by feeding people alone. We had to delve more deeply into some of the systemic barriers. Some of them are related to housing. So I wanted to provide that contextual framework for anyone who might be wondering, why is someone from the Food Bank here to present these recommendations? This is a part of the work that we believe we have to do as an organization in order to more holistically address what we're seeing in our community. Now, as any good subgroup would do, we started with a vision, because we needed a North Star. And we wanted a vision that really reflected what we were hearing from individuals in community meetings, month after month, meeting after meeting, from person after person. Individuals said, you say to me, I'll be able to go anywhere when I leave the St. Paul's area, but I'm not quite sure that's actually the truth. And so this vision statement simply indicates that Norfolk will host an array of quality housing options throughout the city that are available to all residents, regardless of income. That's our North Star. We came up with four goals, and this was after a lot of discussion and conversation about what our priorities should be. We said first and foremost, safe, sanitary, affordable and attractive housing should be located in neighborhoods of opportunity and not necessarily concentrated. These are things that you've talked about and you've committed to do, but what we know in fact is that this isn't currently the case in the city of Norfolk or even throughout our region. We said also that opportunities should include quality schools, transportation options, employment opportunities, healthcare, parks and related services. Again, these are the things aspirationally that we've talked about, but as we receive presentation after presentation, we realized this was not the case. For example, community members said, if I need to access public transportation in the city of Norfolk, wherever I choose to relocate, what are the range of opportunities for me? We heard the report last year from the city of Norfolk, that if in fact residents wanted to move to a community where they could access a bus stop within 1,000 feet, only 883 vacancies were available at that time. Individuals also said, I want to access accredited schools, not just any school in the city of Norfolk. Are there housing opportunities for me across the city? What we heard last year in a report from City of Norfolk representatives was, there were 368 vacancies in communities where there were accredited elementary schools. The number went from 883 to 368. You can imagine how daunting that was for the community members who showed up, month after month, meeting after meeting, asking a simple question, where am I going to live? We also said, as one of the goals for inclusionary housing, that both existing and new housing will be mixed income and result in mixed income developments. So we're not interested in simply focusing on new housing. We understand there isn't a lot of land available to build new housing. And so we have to look at ways of creating mixed income communities with existing housing as well. And then aspirationally, I think we all know that most households should not pay more than 30% of their income in order to meet their housing needs. So we set as a goal, Norfolk residents in general, will pay no more than 30% of their income to meet housing needs. And this would be a policy that is inclusive of and affirmatively addresses all special populations. So we didn't want to get into the weeds in terms of pulling out populations, but we said this should be the case for all individuals. Now, in terms of supporting the four goals, we came up with a number of recommended actions, and we separated them into three key areas. In terms of planning, we said, make inclusionary housing a part of the culture for the city of Norfolk. And a part of how you can do that is to proactively approach applicants, developers, existing building owners and managers, to situate housing in neighborhoods of opportunity, not anywhere in the city, but neighborhoods of opportunity where folks will have access to all of the things that they said they need and deserve. Require that housing always include mixed income housing with market rate units. I had a question about this. I said, isn't that just the opposite of what folks typically talk about? And the answer was yes. We don't simply want folks to develop low and moderate income housing and have that be the only type of housing in one location. We want all mixed income housing to include market rate units. Require developers to ensure that a percentage of new housing units be affordable for those earning 60% or less of AMI. And this is the caveat, when purchasing city or NRHA-owned property, we know that if someone is using low income housing tax credits, there's already going to be a minimum. But that's the minimum. Shouldn't it be higher when we have control over the resources? We believe that it should, but we said we're not going to set a percentage. We'd like for council to consider that and determine what the most feasible options are. We also thought as a second component of our recommended actions, that we needed to think about the structure. And so we believe there needs to be an interdepartmental team that will be tasked with making time-bound and measurable recommendations for how we will get this done. We don't simply want you to accept it in theory or concept. We want action taken on this. And we believe that planning, the Office of St. Paul's Transformation, Neighborhood Development, all of these public agencies need to be a part of implementing a plan. We also believe that we need to lobby for additional tools that will address the affordability of, availability of affordable housing. And so we know that the Virginia Code will allow us to do certain things. We believe in order to get this done, we need to go above and beyond that. So we included that as part of the structure. And then the third area, folks will always say, what's in it for me, right? So we said in terms of incentives and programs, we'd like to see the city enhance the current city programs, such as targeted rental rehabilitation loans or grants, to incentivize the creation, retention and improvement of affordable housing. And again, we came back to, in neighborhoods of opportunity. So we have the potential to do the targeting. We'd like to make sure the incentives are in place so that folks won't see this and then walk away because they don't understand the ROI for them. We also believe that we can enhance current programs by connecting renters and landlords. We believe that there needs to be a stronger institutional structure in place that thinks about the rights and responsibilities of all parties, not just individuals who are seeking housing, but also those who are providing it. And then explore options for establishing and funding housing inspection programs. These are all actionable things that we can and should do. But we want to make sure with the existing housing, that it is safe and it is sanitary. That is what folks said they needed. That's what they said they wanted. That's what they deserve. So we offered this set of policy recommendations to you for your consideration. And at this time, I'll take questions.
Okay, Ms. McCullough?
You mentioned neighborhoods of opportunity regularly. For those who aren't part of this space, they might not understand what that means. Could you help define that?
Absolutely. So neighborhoods of opportunity in part would be defined by the diversity of income levels and also race and ethnicity. I think we could also take that a step further to add our own definition, based on what folks have said. They want access to public transportation. They want access to high-quality schools. But at a minimum, there should be diversity according to income and race and ethnicity.
Ms. Johnson?
If you could go back to your recommendation here, where it's putting something in place where existing affordable housing stock is safe and sanitary. I'm very glad that you included that. And the reason being is because what we see, they so often come to the schools to ask for our help. And the reason they come to the schools is because that's their safe haven. Parents feel comfortable coming to the school and asking questions. And that bold statement there, what they are experiencing is because where they presently live is what they can afford, but it is often not safe and sanitary. But they stay there because that is all that they have, and that is the only place that provides a roof over their head. So I am very thankful that you included that as part of your recommended action, that somehow we need to, there's a gap in affordable housing, what it really means. We need, one of the questions that I asked Dr. Ruth was, what does affordable housing really mean? Because the perception here in Norfolk means that it's low income. That's exactly how people perceive affordable housing. So I took it to another level, Dr. Ruth, and I asked, as far as the federal, NRHA and the Virginia Housing Department, what does affordable housing? Is there opportunity for us to look at other wording to affordable? No, it is etched in stone as far as the federal level, but some way, maybe we have the opportunity that we can change it because it is an action that is taking. We do have to connect renters to landlords. It's the training process that we have to take in order to get us to where we need to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Ruth.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Graves?
So we had, was it today?
Yeah, it was today. Actually, I was gonna, you can, you can mention it, Susan. Somebody should mention it.
Yeah, so we had a landlord summit today, and that's something that came out of also making sure that folks have that affordable and safe and sanitary peace. It should be working, everything, and it should be working. People should feel safe when they go home because it is supposed to be their castle, whether it's a 3,000 square foot castle or it's an 800 square foot castle, it should be a castle. And so we had the landlord summit today with landlords, tenants and NRHA.
Department of Neighborhood Development.
And Neighborhood Development was there, and they did an outstanding job in getting good information out. Some of this stuff is just crappy landlords. And I think if any of y'all have been around the table long enough, you've heard me say that before. It's just crappy landlords. And we are working very diligently, I know Neighborhoods is working very diligently, to reach out to a lot of, we've got some areas that have, landlords have like stockpiled properties and they own a bunch of crap. And so we're working with them to get into those units and do rental inspections. And that's slow, you know, some of them are resistant, but we're working with them and we're showing them that we are open and that it is a friendly process and putting some value in the tenants. Because a lot of times, what Mamie said is very true. I show property on Sunday afternoon and it broke my heart, it wasn't in Norfolk, to a client of mine who was looking to buy a rental. And what people are living in for eight or nine hundred dollars a month, it would break your heart and make you, it would, it would make you weak. And what children are living in, the conditions that they're living in, would make you weak. So thank you to Dr. Ruth Nichols, Jones Nichols, for this presentation and for all the work and to the St. Paul's Advisory Committee, Susan and her staff and NRHA. It is a lot of stuff to unpack, but we are working through it and the team is working through it. And a lot of good things are gonna come out of it that are not only gonna affect St. Paul's, but I think that will be beneficial to the entire city. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to chair it. This is, it's been a lot of work, but it's been a lot of fun, because you've got a great group of people there.
It's the equivalent of a committee. Can y'all please help me and join me in wishing Dr. Ruth Jones Nichols a happy birthday?
Thank you. Thank you. It is, yes. It is my birthday. So I'm gonna scoot out. But I do want to just acknowledge that there were two other members on the subcommittee, Deidra Love from Teens With A Purpose, as well as Dr. Glenn Porter from Queen Street Baptist Church. And we were supported by a number of folks from the city of Norfolk. So thank you again for this opportunity. So thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you.
Dr. Piler.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Jones Nichols, for this very important work. This is, this is just the start, right? I think we all agree that this was the first step in now having a big, broader conversation about some actual policy actions we might be able to take. And so we'll work with you all over probably several months to figure out what this looks like. But it's, it's an important issue in this city. It's an important issue in many cities. And so I really appreciate the work that Council McGraves has done to get that group focused on this particular issue to at least get the conversation going. And, and so we're there. All right, so I want to welcome AC. AC Langston is here. This is the first time she's had an opportunity to present to you all since we announced her appointment. I've had an opportunity to listen to her present several times. Get ready, that's all I can say.
Very fun.
You want to talk about a lot of work ahead of us? If AC has it her way, we're gonna be very, very busy on our Climate Action Plan for a long time. We really appreciate AC. Again, welcome to the city. I know you're fairly new, but thanks for being here and look forward to hearing your presentation this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, all of our council members here. So my name is AC Langston, and I'm the New Environmental Sustainability Manager for the great city of Norfolk. And so today I'm here just to introduce myself to you all and to explain what my role is with the city and to talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan. I just got here, so I don't have a plan, but this is just an outline of what was in the plan and kind of some ways we can move forward. So many people think that if you aren't living off of the grid or growing all of your own food or biking everywhere, rain or shine, or, you know, even charging your phone by solar power, that you might as well not even try to be environmentally friendly. And I think all of those things are great, but I think that it's not nearly so black and white. And I think we really do have a great opportunity to live in the gray, if you will. So after all, if a sustainability program isn't sustainable because it's too hard or you're asking people to do too much and you can't continue it on, then what good is it? So I want you all to know that I want to take a progressively pragmatic view of sustainability here in our city. So as an economist, I fully believe that there is a path forward where we can lower our carbon emissions while also still thriving economically. So it's also really important to me, and I'm really glad that we just kind of heard that presentation from Dr. Jones Nichols, it's really important to me that we do all of this through a lens of equity because climate change disproportionately affects communities that are low-income and marginalized communities. For example, we have data that shows that it is hotter in historically redlined neighborhoods here in Norfolk than in other areas, and that lower-income households experience a higher energy burden. So they pay more of their paycheck towards their utilities than other households. And so I want to make sure that we implement this plan in a way where every citizen is So let me take a step back and introduce myself. This is a picture of me, and I, it was taken about an hour west of here, and I am holding a little sapling of a long-leaf pine. I show you this picture so that you know that I am the real deal. I love trees, especially baby ones. I came here from the private sector, and my background is in environmental economics. But I've been working in the sustainability field for over ten years in a lot of different industries like green building consulting, consumer packaged goods, hospitality, transportation, and even event management. And so I moved here to Norfolk six years ago to manage the Corporate Sustainability Program for Norfolk Southern. Most recently, I was over at the Virginia Beach Amphitheater instituting a zero-waste policy, or a zero-waste strategy, I should say. So in January, I started working at the city, and I was first introduced to you all. And so I'm in the General Services Department, which I actually think is a really great place for sustainability because in my past experience, sustainability does better when you're in operations. So being in the same department with Facilities Management and Fleet has been really helpful and a great advantage, I would say. So I also work very closely with the Office of Resilience. A lot of times, people will ask, what's the difference between what Resilience is working on and what I am working on? So the Office of Resilience is doing a really great job on climate change adaptation and how we can respond to flooding. And in my role, I'll be working on climate change mitigation, so the causes of climate change, so reducing our carbon emissions and kind of being on the more preventative front end of things. And I think together, we have a more holistic plan. So before I get into what my plan for sustainability with the city of Norfolk, I wanted to back up and talk about how we got here. So in 2017, as a result of strong citizen action and the leadership of Mayor Alexander, Norfolk became a signatory to the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. And so by joining, Norfolk had committed to measuring greenhouse gases, creating a target to reduce those emissions, and establishing a mitigation and adaptation plan. So in 2019, the subsequently-appointed Mayor's Advisory Commission on Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation authored a Climate Action Plan, which was first presented to the council last April by former Councilwoman Teresa Wibley, current Councilwoman Andrea McClellan, and Morgan Wayland. I watched that presentation online, and it seemed like there was some excitement and optimism, so I'm hoping that almost a year later, that is still true. So the Climate Action Plan is a very detailed plan with sixty-three different strategies to reduce our carbon emissions within our city. And so the first major recommendation of the commission was for the city manager to put aside money in the budget to hire someone to be responsible for implementing the plan, and that person is me. So we've already done one, and we're doing good. So my role is to sift through everything and determine what is feasible, given our constraints and our different opportunities. So it was a community-authored report, and so I'm also seeking input from other stakeholders like our internal departments at the city as well as you, City Council. I want to make this a plan that works for everyone. So in my role here, I'm working with not only Team Norfolk and City Operations, but also the community at large, so all of the city residences and businesses. So right now, I'm in the information gathering stage, and so I've been meeting with a lot of different groups to figure out what we're already doing very well as a city to combat climate change. So I've met with former members of that commission. I've met with Keep Norfolk Beautiful, the Norfolk Environmental Commission, Mothers Out Front, the Watershed Management Task Force, as well as several departments internal to the city. And so the good news is there is a lot already happening in the city of Norfolk to mitigate climate change. So part of my job is gathering up all of those initiatives so we can brag about them and then also look for other opportunities we have to innovate and do more. So the Climate Action Plan is broken into six major areas. The first is increasing our usage of renewable energy. So Facilities is already looking at the best path forward to install solar on the roofs of city-owned buildings. There's a lot of different ways we can go about this. For example, a no-cost upfront solar power purchase agreement. So we're looking at different ways in which we can rely on renewable energy more as a city. Next, we have increasing environmental education and engagement around climate issues. I am the product of some great environmental educators, and I want Norfolk to be a place where we can raise up the next generation of climate warriors. And so I think there's a lot of great opportunities here to work with our Internal Communications Department, as well as partnering together with Norfolk Public Schools and Higher Education. Next, we have increasing energy-efficient transportation, reducing vehicle reliance, and encouraging alternative commuting. So through a partnership with Tesla, we already have forty-six EV chargers in our city parking garages, as well as one at Pretlow Library. And I know that Transit is working really hard on a multimodal transportation master plan. I went to one of those community meetings, and I think that would be a great opportunity that we can leverage to get us closer to our goals with reducing carbon emissions. For consumption and waste, we want to reduce, reuse, and then recycle. And so right now, I'm working with Public Works on a recycling campaign. We want to discourage the use of single-use plastics, so we'll work on this situation I'll talk to them. I'm a very agreeable person. All right, so next, we want to create and promote a sustainable food system. And so across the city, we have at least eight community gardens, including the ones that are at our schools. And so we want to develop more programs to address how we can get fresh food to our communities who don't have easy access to it. And then the last one is increasing building energy efficiency and reducing our energy consumption. So we're actually doing a lot of great work on this one. And last year, Facilities transitioned to tracking and paying all of their energy bills online. And just in doing that alone, we have saved over forty thousand dollars. So that's great. I think we can continue to do more. And so I just want to take a moment to kind of dive deeper into the energy efficiency and kind of the, some of the exciting work we're doing there. So this year, we received a grant for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the Southeastern Energy Efficiency Alliance, and they want us to evaluate our city energy use and come up with a strategy to reduce it. So we're planning to use the grant to launch three new initiatives. So the first will be, we are partnering with the Environmental Defense Fund to host what is called a Climate Core Fellow. So this fellow is a graduate student who is specially trained in energy efficiency strategies, and so they embed in our organization, and they will help us create an energy roadmap. And so it'll be a plan identifying opportunities for the city to reduce our energy, our energy costs across our building portfolio. Next, I'm really excited about this one, we'll be conducting what we're calling Energy Treasure Hunts. And so an Energy Treasure Hunt is a team of people made up of employees, facility managers, consultants, and other stakeholders. They go to a pre-selected building, and they look for opportunities for energy savings. And so it's a really great way to involve employees in a culture of innovation around energy reduction by focusing on positive things we can do and improving the day-to-day operations of our existing equipment. And so the hunt takes place over two days. During the first day, the building is non-operational, so on like a Sunday. And so the team comes in, and that gives them a chance to look for things that wouldn't readily be apparent when the building is during normal operating hours, like temperature set points and lighting levels. And so day two of the hunt happens the next day, like on a Monday, when the building is operational. And so they go through the building again, and this time, they're making sure things are operating the way that they're supposed to. And so what's exciting about this is that the team is challenged to only identify projects that have a payback period of less than one year. And so this way, we're not thinking about big capital projects, like we need a new chiller. What's something we can do right now that has a really easy payback period? And so right now, I'm currently working on putting together a short list of buildings that would make really good project sites. And then finally, the third way we're gonna be using the grant is to fund a full-time energy management position. So some might say, that's your job, AC. No, it's not, because it's a big deal. And so I think if we have someone who is strategically focused on not just let's pay our bills, but how can we look at our building portfolio and save energy and find other ways to use renewable energy or get grants or rebates or whatever it is, I think that we can have that be a grant-funded position. I'm pretty confident that this person will make back their salary within probably three months. So I think there's a lot that we, a lot of wins here by having someone strategically focused on that. So that's just a little glimpse into what I'm working on as we move forward with my role here with the city. I'd love input from each of you on any ideas you have or anything that you think the Climate Action Plan might be missing, and you can reach out to me. And I just want to make sure that this plan works for everyone for the city because climate change is affecting all of us and not just a select few. So, thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I didn't want my hand up, but I just say, bravo.
Thank you.
We've been working on this, and I think it's, I think it's really important to understand how critical this is to our community. It is, we also need to be addressing adaptation and flooding, and this is an issue that will, will help, it's an issue for our kids and our grandkids and the future of the city of Norfolk. So I applaud the mayor for signing the Global Covenant of Mayors and the city manager for putting resources in this. This is a long-term play, and it's a big lift, but I'm really proud of them for tackling this. Thank you. And as AC said, you know, we really need to have a lens of equity as we go through this, because without a doubt, you look at, you think about the past presentation, our communities, our lower-income communities, the burden, energy burden for those communities is significant. And to the extent that we can provide energy efficiency upgrades, it will reduce their costs as well as improving the environment at the same time. So I look forward to continuing very hard. Thank you.
See how Mayor's Commissions work like committees? I mean, Angela had a great report, you had a great, why are commissions just like, just like committees? Okay, all right, Ms. Graves and Mrs. Smigel, and Ms. Johnson.
First of all, I just want to say, I love your enthusiasm.
Oh, great.
And your confidence. I really, really do. It is, when you said you were an economist, I was like, okay, and she knows what about the environment? But I can see where you have married, I mean, you've married the two, and it seems like you are doing what you love, and that really shows in your presentation. Climate warriors, I love that. So in the past, I have been very, very opposed to one of our grant programs when it came to doing renovations for landlords, for, for, for non-owner occupied property owners, especially those, in my opinion, who own the property. And so all of their cash flow is free and clear. But between Ruth's presentation and your presentation and talking about how the energy burden, and seeing what I saw with the weekend, the energy burden being borne by the poor or the, those who are low and moderate income because of the conditions that they live in. I mean, this one house had a porch addition that literally just had drywall put together and no seams, no tape, no insulation, no nothing, and they were calling it a bedroom. And, and so when you think about that and how much their, I thought to myself, leaving, how much of their heat bill gotta be? And so when you said that, so I'm gonna rescind my objection cautiously to the landlord portion of it, but I think that we can work to, I think that, that you could probably work and develop some sort of scale that if we are granting, if we're, if we are providing grant funds and landlords are doing, if there's a scale of five, and five being the biggest bang for the buck, then, and, and, and one, we can help, in essence, we're helping the population instead of, in, in my mind, that lazy landlord who doesn't want to fix up his property.
Smart scale for it.
And then, yes, thank you, smart scaling it, and then ensure that there is some, what do you call it, rent control? That might not be the right word, but that's, that, that they don't take the grant, fix the property up, and then go up on the rent for the tenant, and now the property is out, now they're, the tenant is out of reach for, you know, being able to live there. So kudos to you, thank you. And when you talked about food and agriculture.
Yes.
Have you guys talked to TWB?
I have not.
Okay, so we've got to put you in touch with Deidre Love because they have a community garden right on Church Street. And they do a great job with the young people and getting those, you've got plenty of climate warriors over there.
I'm excited to meet them.
That you need to meet and engage because they would absolutely be wonderful. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I apologize, I'm jumping ahead while you are on topic. AC and I were at the Botanical Gardens Sustainability Conference this weekend, and Michael Displanes had met the developer, Brinshaw. Apparently Brinshaw has a specific focus on creating community gardens in their projects, all their development projects, and there's a real interest in doing that because it brings the mixed, mixed income together. It brings all, everybody into one community. So anyway, so that's a great opportunity to do something there. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Smigel, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Doyle.
So I used to be on the Environmental Commission in Norfolk years ago. One of your challenges is going to be with the school system.
Okay.
And because they don't have the staff, and I can tell you, just in recycling alone, and trying to convince recycling to happen in all the schools has been a challenge forever. We've heard even at our own council, water bottle filling machines and the efforts that students have made on that. We have been, Andrew and I have been approached multiple times about putting solar panels on school buildings. I, I don't know how we bridge that gap and how we make that seem, you know, that help them realize the savings that can happen from this. I know they have a new person over there that works mainly with HVAC systems and trying to make sure they're reducing, you know, cost there, energy efficiency.
Durability is one of the number-one issues for reducing your carbon footprint.
But I, maybe when we have a joint meeting with the school board, we can have that conversation and try to figure out. Because you're talking about 45 buildings plus.
With long, flat roofs.
Right, a lot of flat roofs and the opportunities that we have there. You know, and I look at Crossroads K-8 School, which is in, you know, my ward. And they have wind turbines there that have never been turned on since they built that building. You know, I think it was a silver, yeah, building and, you know, great to put in there, but they were never turned on. I think they were just collecting rust. And, you know, it's a sad to see that, you know, that was something that was wasted.
I think there's a lot of great opportunities there, especially because the kids are now learning and they're being educated. So, there's a lot of synergies going on there. So, I would love to connect more with NPS and look at what we can do to help them.
Okay, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Doyle.
Over the weekend, the Elizabeth River Project
Yes.
had their youth resiliency expo. And the scholars come up with wonderful ideas. And somehow, trying to figure out, and I'm working on it, the gap between them creating these wonderful, sustainable projects and follow through with it so that we can implement it. It's not just a one-time, I don't want it to be a one-time deal for the scholars that they create something and then because of a lack of funding and/or support, we can't implement it throughout our city. So, I think that that would be a great opportunity. And besides, the Elizabeth River Project has their own educational barge.
Yeah.
We're expanding the educational lab now. So, I think that that could also help with the environmental sustainability strategy.
No, that sounds great. I mean, I'm an economist, but I feel like I am primarily an environmentalist.
Yes.
So, to me, it's, "How do we take these projects and how can we get them made? We need money. What is that process?" Let's, that's another way to learn about how to get cool things to happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Courtney, before you go, Ms. Graves, I wanted to follow up on something that she said earlier. So, Ms. Graves, go ahead.
Well, my just question was, if there's like one thing that anybody could do to help relieve their carbon footprint? I'm that person. I'm like, if it's not like a big idea, then how does what my little self does help do anything? So, like, what is the one thing, if there is a thing, or like one or two, if you do this, you can do that, or if you do the other, you can do whatever?
That is a good question. I feel like I should know this off the top of my head. Um, yeah, well, okay, so, I think that when it comes to food, I think a lot of times, people don't think about the carbon impact of food. So, people have been promoting what's called Meatless Mondays. So, even if you eat meat, if you eat meat one less day, you're already eating it, I don't know. If it's a workday, 20% less than you did last week. And so, that's a huge part of carbon emissions is our food. In terms of what you can do for your pocket today, I know Dominion has a lot of resources on things you can do around your house for energy. So, one of my goals, honestly, is we can create a website or something where people can go and say, "What can I do?"
This, "I only have $5.00. I have $500.00. What can I do?" And so, we can compile all of those things together. But I think food and, you know, kind of doing a little mini-energy audit in your own house to see some direct savings immediately.
Courtney.
So, AC, great presentation and I agree, just great energy. We're excited to have you here and thank you for Norfolk Southern. They're leaving, left you here, which I love, so thank you for staying behind. I do want to acknowledge too, there's folks in the crowd here that served on the commission. So, thank you to your work for being here today and supporting it. And Kim, I know you're sitting next to Ruth and you were very active in the, in the work as well. So, for those that have worked on the commission and with the city on these issues, we thank you and we encourage you to continue to partner with AC. Please, Lauren. I also want to say, AC, you already talked about some earned savings or some savings and some earned income. So, please make best friends with Greg Patrick, our budget guy.
Oh, I have. I've already visited.
Good. So, what we need to do is document all this opportunity, right? And then, report out. And I know that you can do that very successfully. When you say you can earn this person's salary back in three months, I totally believe you. But let's document all that we can do in terms of savings and earnings.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's.
Thank you, AC. Such a happy.
All right, so this one will be interesting. I'm gonna call up Greg Patrick for his mid-year budget update and see if he gets applause.
That is the first time ever. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak with you today. Today, we have our, our mid-year budget update, which is really broken down into three, three parts. If you remember, in, in fall, we presented our preliminary year-end estimate for, for results and our surplus. We'll review where we actually ended up. Then we'll take a look at how the budget is tracking so far this year and then look forward into fiscal year 2021 and beyond. No council action is required at this time. So, if you recall, in the fall, we, we, we presented an estimated surplus for fiscal year 2019 of 6.9 million. Where we ended up is just a little north of that, at 7.5 million, 7.4 million. Based on the financial policies that council adopted last year, those funds are directed to go essentially to, first, filling any reserves that are not yet at that reserve minimum. Secondly, a split between filling reserves that are at their minimum, but not yet to their maximum, and cash-funding capital improvement projects in the CIP to, to reduce our reliance on bonds. And then, finally, if all reserves are at their maximum, the policy directs that the surplus funds be used to completely cash-fund capital improvement and capital improvement projects. So, a, as a result, if we follow those financial policies, our unassigned general fund balance reserve gets to its policy goal at 10% of the, of the general fund budget less transfers out. Our risk management reserve will increase by 1.8 million, $1.87 million to get to a balance of almost $7.2 million, which is about $800,000 shy of its maximum of $8 million. Our economic downturn reserve remains at its policy goal and we fully fund the new Inclusive Development Opportunity Fund Reserve at $2 million. Our mid-year budget status update, what I would, what I would report at a, at a top line is we are tracking about like we have for the last three or four years. Revenues are tracking similar to prior years and, and basically on budget. We have seen slightly higher, we are projecting slightly higher real estate tax collections than were in the budget. That's primarily due to the assessed value coming in a little bit higher than what we originally budgeted. But that is being offset by some weakness in some other local revenues, primarily the communication, sales, and use tax. This is a tax that we generate primarily from landline usage within the city, which, as we know, is an aging technology. It, it has been a declining revenue asset for us over the past four or five years and continues to do so. We are also taking a close look at B-Pole collections. That's a tax where we have had some refunds over the course of the last couple of years. So, if, if we continue to see refunds, we may come in a little under budget there. And the other area where, where, where revenue is, is, is tracking a little below budget are when we have revenues that are tied to expenditures. So, for instance, in, in social services, oftentimes, we generate revenue based on the amount of money that we spend. So, if we're tracking a little bit lower on revenues than budget, that's because we're not spending as much. So, it has essentially zero budget impact, impact there. On the expenditure side, we're tracking very similar to prior years. We do, we are projecting some personnel savings associated with position-based budgeting. But that's very much in line with what we have seen in, in recent years. So, what I would tell you is, we're in good shape. We were projecting a year, this year, much like last year and the year before. But we, we are keeping an eye on, on, on revenues and expenditures to make sure there's nothing that we are not anticipating that, that comes up. So, if we take a look forward at, at fiscal year 2021 and beyond, if you'll remember, in the fall, we presented a preliminary base budget gap of $5.8 million. In February, that we've actually revised that number down to $4.1 million. Your, your changes to that base budget gap, well, first and foremost, Pete Rada came in with a, a real estate tax reassessment growth at, at higher than what we were carrying, which is driving most of that, of that revenue growth. You see about $3.2 million between where we were originally projecting in February. With the revenue-sharing formula with Norfolk Public Schools, as revenue grows, they receive a, a, about a third, a third share of that. So, our contribution, our local contribution to Norfolk Public Schools has increased from, from an estimated $2 million to $3 million there. And then, in, in all of the other expenditures across the city, we've seen about half a million dollars worth of growth. You do the math there and you get to an updated base budget gap of about $4.1 million. Looking ahead, this is a, a, a graph that you saw at the council retreat, so I won't belabor the point. But expenditure growth continues to outpace revenue growth and it does so as we look forward. So, if we look ahead over the course of the next eight years or so, what you'll see is our, our primary budget drivers that you've got listed on the slide here are growing at a rate that is substantially faster than, than what our overall revenue growth looks like. So, if we look forward over the next eight years, across the entire general fund budget, we're looking at revenue growth of about 1.3%. The primary driver of that, obviously, is, is real estate tax revenue growth, of which we're projecting about a 2.4% growth over that period. Now, that's lower than your 20- and 30-year averages, but it's substantially higher than what we've seen over the course of the last 10 years. But if we were to look at some of our major revenue or expenditure drivers, starting with debt service, obviously, our, our growth in debt service is going to be determined by the size of our CIP and the timing of those capital, that capital spending. But we are expecting our, our capital program to grow at a rate of about 2.5% per year. Retirement costs, we've, we're, we are projecting a 5.5% growth in retirement in fiscal year 2021 and then about 3% from there on out. I will tell you that the Virginia retirement system lowered its assumed rate of return last year. If we, if, if our retirement board were to do something similar, that cost would, would increase pretty dramatically. Healthcare, healthcare is another, is another cost that is growing at a, at a rate that's very much faster than our revenue growth. We are looking at about a 7.5% assumption for medical and pharmacy trend growth over the course of the next eight years. Regional agreements, primarily Hampton Roads Transit and Hampton Roads Regional Jail, those cost increases are, are really outpacing revenue. And, and then, of course, our contribution to Norfolk Public Schools, we're estimating that those, those costs will grow at about $2.5 million a year. Of course, that's completely driven by revenue. But, but in this projection, that's where, that's, that's what we're looking at. So, what does that mean, you know, as we're looking ahead and trying to keep the budget in balance? You know, same message from the, from the council retreat, that the, the cost of our current service levels is unsustainable into the future. So, one of the things that we talked about at the council retreat is, is clarifying city council's priorities around funding and the spending in the budget and really evaluating that spending that's in those policy and discretionary buckets that we discussed to make sure that we are providing, you know, excellent core services and that whatever discretionary funding we have does align with, with council priorities. And then, to the extent possible, you know, continuing to, to maintain a maintenance CIP to really reserve any of our debt capacity for, for projects of significance in the future. That's all I have today.
All right, Ms. Graves.
Two things. Can you, before I get to the question, you talked about the retirement with regard to a comparison between our retirement and VRS. And you said, "If we did what they did, our costs would be..." Can you explain what that means?
So, a retirement system is essentially, and the cost of it, is built around a, a series of actuarial math, right? So, one of the items in the.
And make it like I'm a third grader.
Yes. So, one of the most important things in calculating the cost is we have to figure out what we are going to assume our invested assets return on an annual basis. So, you think of the stock market, you hear 6% returns, 8% returns, so on and so forth. We are assuming that our, our assets return a rate of return of 7% each year. That is exactly where VRS was. They were making the same assumption. About six months ago, they decided, "You know what? That feels a little aggressive to us. We're going to assume that our assets will return 6.75% per year." Which doesn't sound like a big difference, but when you, when you plug that new number into this massive actuarial math calculation, it spits out a lot more cost, essentially. So, if, if, if we, if our retirement board were to make the same change in assumption, it would have a pretty substantial impact on the cost to the general fund and the non-general funds for, for retirement.
Catherine, do you want to comment or are you good?
I think he got there. I think when he says actuarial math, it's really an assumption of how long people will live, when they're going to retire, who their beneficiaries are. So, there's, actuaries are very strange folks and they're getting younger and younger. And then, that, then that generates the amount of money we have to pay the retirement system. But a part of that calculation is the return rate on the investment portfolio. They're thinking they're going to make less money.
No, I, yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I get that and that was clear. I, yeah, I'm good. So, B-Pole, we've always had refunds on, on B-Pole and people either overpaying their business license, paying it twice, leaving the city and requesting an adjustment because they paid for the entire year and whatnot. I'm not clear because when this, when this came to council to be included on our agenda to vote on these refunds for any, what is it, anything over 2,500 or is it 1,500?
I'm not sure what.
It's one of those numbers. Um, it, it wasn't something that was new. And periodically would ask, I mean, like the last two city managers, to be quite honest with you, "Is this having an effect on our budget?" And the answer that I always recall was, "No." It's, yeah, we, we figured it in because this is the way it's always been, this percentage. So, are you saying that we're experiencing more refunds than normal?
What I would say is, is when you combine the refunds that we have made, the, what I, what I have read some creative companies may be thinking in terms of how you justify B-Pole refunds. And when you just look at the B-Pole, B-Pole tax generally, there is some cause for concern that we may need to start looking at the level at which we are budgeting it. Now, this is not a massive impact to the budget, right? But it is an area of local tax where we have experienced some potential weakness.
I can't speak for previous city managers. I can only speak for myself. We, we are going to take this seriously and look into it. That's all I can say.
Can you give us a slide on policies, our policy? Yeah, right there. So, have we ever compared how we do with this to other cities? Like, are we, like our risk management reserve, we've, we've hit the minimum on that. But are, is Virginia Beach at, you know, 50 million? Where, how, how do we do on the economic downturn, our unaside, you know, general fund reserve in proportion?
So, we can get a comparison. We typically work with our financial advisor, PFM, to help design these policies. And they're really, they're designed to. they're really, they're designed to be impactful to the credit rating agencies. And I think every city has some unique, is at some level unique, but we can certainly get a comparison.
So Greg, one of the things, Dr. Filer, that we may want to do as a council to look at our policies, because a lot of the policies that we continue to fund and we continue to practice are policies and practices of previous councils. There are some things that's mandated that we have no say-so of how to fund. We're required to do it because of our federal partnership, our state partnership, but priorities of the city, policies of the city that's not mandated, we should someday revisit and update. And then, I guess, you get a discretionary at some point at a later presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, I think at the retreat, you know, as Greg pointed out, there is this bucket of council priorities that we, I mean, we fund until, basically, somebody says, don't put it there anymore. Not sure that as councils change and as things evolve, people even remember that money is going into that bucket. And so I think, you know, Greg's suggestion at the retreat was that we actually think about looking at those particular council priorities, make sure they're still in line, not just how much we're funding them at, but also are they even things that we need to fund at all?
And Dr. Filer, the reason I bring that up is because one of Greg's earlier slides, he spoke very passionately about expenditures, expenditures. And our expenditures are increasing in Norfolk Public Schools, $2 million, debt, 2.5%, our retirement fund, 5%, and healthcare. But when he spoke of revenue, Greg, don't go too far. But when you spoke of revenue, we aren't growing as fast. And so part of our work as a council is going to, one, how do we grow our economy? What sectors will help us meet the expenditures? And two, how do we close these gaps, these deficits, Greg, that we will, you're predicting that we face? Because if we do nothing, your assumption is based on us doing nothing new.
Right.
And I just wanted to add to that. Well, first, Kenny hasn't had the opportunity to experience Santa Kenny, you know, where we get to vote on a budget, and he gets to come out with a surprise million and a half dollars the day before we vote, and we can all pick something in our ward that we want done, right?
My point, committee, is that, how did that happen?
That's fantastic. But I just want to go back to the, you know, part of the, and maybe other council members have experienced this when you go out and speak to civic leagues, we are seeing development and growth happening in the city. I'll just take the outlet mall area and the amount of new businesses that have popped up just on that North Hampton Boulevard area. Still, to this day, there has never been a city manager that, and maybe you're at Chip, you're the economist, that has been able to, say, come back to us on a project that we've approved, and to say that we've made money off of this, that we are doing very well. This is what the, it was a golf course that wasn't generating any revenue really for us, it was actually dead, and that we are now bringing in $10 million in, you know, retail sales and, you know, restaurant tax from there. Still, in the 10 years I've been on this council, nobody's ever brought any project that we've ever voted on back to us and told us that we've made money on it. And it's concerning to me because it worries me that we're not making money off of these, or, you know, that we just keep on approving these things. Waterside, where are we with Waterside in income? Are we hitting the numbers that we said? And if the truth needs to get out there that we're not, we need to talk about this so that we don't make the same mistake again with another project. Where are we with the main? You know, the person who opposed the main, prove me wrong, that I was wrong on, you know, the revenue that's coming in there. And I don't want to, I don't want to hear the impact around the area. I want to know the actual project itself and what it's generating for the city. And I know MacArthur, we're losing money off of it. So the amount of money that we've lost, you know, with MacArthur and the stores are closing, are we making up for that with the outlet mall? I think we've got to look at some real numbers, and nobody ever, nobody's ever presented that to us. I want to see it.
So one of the things that Dr. Filer and I have committed to, projects that we bring, you know, you will have that social and economic impact, and Dr. Filer and his team will report what is the direct anticipated impact, what is the indirect impact, and what is the induced impact? And what you're asking, we don't, we weren't here, so we don't know if those things happened in the past. And in five years, you know, after five years, Dr. Filer will look at, did we meet those goals and objectives, and where did we adjust? So it's a new bottle that he and I have committed to, but I don't know if you want to pound on what happened in the past, Dr. Filer.
Well, I just want to not lose sight of the fact that, at the end of the day, this is also an organization that looks like businesses who face increasing healthcare costs, right? So it isn't always a mismatch between a particular project and an incentive that may have been given versus what we return that's causing some of these imbalances. I mean, some of this is a structural issue that we face, just like, you know, Town Bank faces and others face, where we're trying to keep pace with rising healthcare costs and things like that. And so it's challenging. I mean, on the one hand, we could have a whole bunch of wins development-wise, and we still might not keep pace with those particular costs. And so what I think we're trying to do, and what Greg and his team have been doing a really good job of, is trying to disentangle these things, right? What are truly the structural imbalances that are built in here that we need to address, either through a relook at policy and things like that, versus what are the organizational pieces of this? What are the costs we're going to face from healthcare, retirement, and things like that? And then how do we generate ways to cover those as well? So I would say there's two pieces there. Your piece is one that we have to look at, because that then creates this sort of mismatch in how we view a project and how we deal with a project at any one point in time.
But Dr. Filer, I think, Tom makes a good point. I think that we should apply the model that you're not-
Agree.
As we go-
Yeah, agree. The look back is, I think, as I've mentioned to you all before, I mean, it's not impossible, but the econometrics behind that one are a little hard, because now we have things very meshed in, and it's hard to disentangle a main effect from, you know, other things. But, you know, we can certainly give it a shot and do our best.
So Ms. Graves, then Ms. McCullough.
I think the other thing that you have to consider as well is the surrounding factors. So, yeah, we may put the main here, and it may, in an analysis, in and of itself, may show it makes money, or it may not, but it may show that it makes money. But then, that is just like healthcare and those other costs to the organization. Then if the mall empties out, whatever revenue we acquired from the main gets sucked up by the mall stores leaving, then we got refunds that we have to give people because they closed in the middle of the year. And so I think, or I think in our retreat, the gentleman gave the example of the Ford plant closing. I mean, that just sucked a lot of life out of our economy on so many levels that we have, according, if I remember correctly, have not completely rebounded from the loss of those jobs, which more than likely contributed to foreclosures and things of that nature, people moving away, and their ability to be able to spend money in the community. So I think just looking at it from a straight apples and oranges, we made money or we didn't make money without taking into consideration some of the other factors around it could be potentially dangerous, because it could paint a picture that we made money when we may not have either made any money, or we may not have made the money that it shows on paper because of the other factors, things that are going on that are outside of our control.
I think maybe the difference is that the three projects that I mentioned, the outlet mall, the main, and Waterside, there was an investment from the city or some type of incentive for that, like Waterside is getting money back on their food. And so just moving forward, as we get other projects, I'd like to weigh whether or not we continue investing in projects like that, because if we're not getting our money at the end of the day out of it, and I would like to look first at the project itself, and then we can look at the external factors, the influences of that. But would it have been better than to take that money and incentive and put it into street resurfacing, or new rec centers, or, you see what I'm saying? Like, you know, if we're not really generating the revenue because we're not seeing that growth from these projects that were supposed to give us all this growth? IKEA's another one, right? I mean, IKEA was predicted to give us $3 million a year in tax revenue. Are we really hitting $3 million a year in tax revenue from IKEA? IKEA's great, and I think it's attracting other things. But if we're not hitting that, I want to know so that when we get other opportunities, but how do we look at those in a different way?
Okay. Anyway, Greg, I think you, is it Andrea?
It's fine. The purpose of time, I can-
Okay. Greg, thank you, sir. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, last.
Oh, this could get so big, I'm going to-
Yeah. Yeah. So finally tonight, sir, we've got George Homewood with planning to give you some updates on what's happening in city planning.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander, Dr. Filer, members of council, I'm happy to present from one of your truly core services. So what I'm going to do tonight is we're going to talk really quickly about a project that you're going to see coming to you that is a new one. This is the Gravity, which is going to be built on Waterside Drive in front of the Icon. And the reason I bring it to you is that there will need to be a further encroachment into the right-of-way along Waterside Drive to get this project going. It is a mixed-use project, and it's got some interesting design features and will be pretty, a pretty exciting project for our city. The rest of the slides, I just wanted to bring to your attention some of the things that are in process, that you all have dealt with through conditional use permits or zonings or what have you. But in light of the time you've got, I want to move directly to introducing to you Mel Price from Work Project Architects, who is going to follow up exactly on the kinds of things we've already been talking about with inclusionary housing and the need for equitable approaches to the things we do here in the city. Many of you know, we've been working now for a little over a year on multifamily design principles, and so I'm going to let Mel do the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, mayor and members of council and city manager. And please remind me at the end, I have 25 copies of the draft for the design principles, and we'll hand those out to you. And, let's see. Let's see. Are you, okay, perfect. Thanks so much. Okay, so I'd like to walk you through those today, and there's a lot of synergy with what I'm about to talk about and the earlier presentations. And then we heard the budget presentation, and so I'd like to start off by saying, the good part about this is we're trying to gather City of Norfolk support for these design principles, and this really doesn't have an impact on the city budget. It really just needs city support and support to encourage others to do the right thing that's going to have a positive impact on the community. I don't think I can scroll through this way, so I might have to say next slide, if that's okay. Unless you can hit Ctrl-L. It's a different, it's opened with a different version of Acrobat, I think, and that's okay? We can just scroll through it if that works. Okay. So if we scroll down to the next page, the purpose for these multifamily guidelines are to facilitate high-quality multifamily development that provides a mix of type and cost of housing. So we're still talking about affordable housing mixed in with market rate. And so these principles that we're presenting a draft to you today will be used to evaluate housing throughout the city. So it's really important that you give us your input. This project really came about as a city council request. So this was a request from you, and we have been working through this the past year. So on to the next page. When we start to think about the traditional, or the tradition of an American neighborhood, people tend to think back to what they experienced as a child. So if you all can think about what it meant to you to walk around your block, or ride your tricycle, and then your bike with training wheels, and then your bike without training wheels, what was important to you? And so what we hear over and over is safety, sense of community, and then having a mix of types of housing on the street. So let's walk through each one of those through kind of the lens of how you felt as a child. So on to the next page. A safe neighborhood. People say they always felt safe walking around the neighborhood, passing people on the front porches, seeing people in their houses, knowing that neighbors would kind of report back to their parents if they were behaving well. They knew where we'd get back, so they did the right thing. If they were told they could only ride their bike to the corner and turn around, they knew people would be watching. On to the next page. Sense of community. It was, it's really easy in a good, traditional neighborhood for a child to learn how to use the city. It's intuitive. First, you venture out, play on the sidewalk, then you walk around the block, and then contact between neighbors and on pedestrian-friendly streets contribute to this really strong sense of community. On to the next page. Mix of type and cost of home. So we just talked about this tonight. It's so important for people to see people living in the neighborhood at different stages of their lives. I feel really lucky that I can sit on my front porch, and I can watch people in single-family homes, and people just starting out in their career, and folks who have retired and chosen to downsize. And so I get to meet people at every aspect of their walks of life from my front porch. And so that's a really healthy neighborhood, and that's a healthy neighborhood that everyone deserves. So that diversity proves, has proven time and time again to be a long-term, sustainable, stability, grounding piece for the neighborhoods. So we thought back to what is it like to experience a neighborhood as a child? And so we just kind of scanned our thoughts and memories, and there are nine really important attributes of really great neighborhoods. Streets that are interconnected with a great pedestrian network. Access to public transit, which is providing opportunities for education, for employment, and for culture. Neighborhood scale blocks, and we'll talk more about this, and we want to focus on blocks less than three acres. Perimeter blocks, meaning front houses and fronts of retail and fronts of everything are lining the street, parking, services, and trash, and things are kind of hidden from view in the back. Diverse building types within each block, critically important. And that drives, then, some of the mixed-income opportunities. We have, talk a lot about the missing middle. We have a lot of single-family homes, a lot of really large apartments. It's the missing middle that we're not building a lot of that's going to allow for a lot of this opportunity. Mixed use, anytime you can walk to the places you need within 10 minutes, you know that you're in a good place, and you're going to have a high quality of life. Active street frontage, that memory of being a little kid and riding your bike and having people watching over you, eyes on the street. And then amenities, parks, and open space for people of all ages.
Can you define missing middle?
Yes, and so-
What size is that?
Well, think about some of our great neighborhoods all over the city, and so I, we always love the Norfolk Six Pack. If you can picture those apartments or condos, but those stacked flats, where you have a porch side by side, that we have Norfolk eight-plexes and 12-plexes. But a lot of times, often you see larger projects coming through ARB and Planning Commission. And so what we're not building a lot anymore is that missing middle. And what's really important, especially, and I've heard members of council talk about redevelopment of St. Paul's and other areas, it's those smaller multifamily buildings that our residential builders can build. And so when we talk about getting more participation and growing, someone who is a single-family builder could build a six-plex, or an eight-plex, or 12-plex. And so when we talk about growing our market and our economy and our affordable housing options, this is one thing we could do. So now we've looked back to the time we were kids and we experienced a good neighborhood, and so what are some of the challenges? What happened? So in the 20th century, all of these great traditions started to be eroded a little bit with suburban sprawl. And you see a picture, this is in Florida, over to the right, total reliance on kind of personal automobile transportation instead of public transportation. And then you even hear it here, when you hear developers and architects and builders presenting to ARB and Planning Commission, and they're saying, my projects- presenting to ARB and Planning Commission and they're saying, "My projects were this product we're going to bring to your city." And people started talking about homes and neighborhoods as projects and products. And so as designers, we really feel like if we can get people connected back to people and neighborhoods, that's going to have a good benefit. Zoning, I think we've all acknowledged many times that some of that was intentionally done to segregate neighborhoods and that in turn produced large concentrations of low-income families in distressed neighborhoods, cut off from access to opportunity. And so in turn, that's landed us where we are today, which is a shortage of affordable housing. Important to point out, just roll back for a second, the segregation happens both on the high end and on the low end and in neither case is it really good. This neighborhood here is not as rich and diverse as a neighborhood where people can encounter people of all income levels and all ages. So if we scroll ahead, we have an image of St. Paul's, which is a result of zoning and development practices in some cities that segregate neighborhoods, producing large concentrations of low-income housing cut off from access. So scrolling ahead. We wanted to set about to put together a short document. So from this point forward, we're really talking about what can we do and what can we as a city get behind and support and say, "We, City of Norfolk, are going to stick to these 10 principles and so we expect that architects and engineers and developers coming to our city will design housing that kind of adheres to these principles." And so this is not black or white, this is a gray area, but this is something to aspire to. So let's walk through each of these. So on to the next slide. We always start with integrating anyone who's designing something into a neighborhood. You need to meet your neighbors, understand the issues, test out ideas, and then move forward together as a group. So a participatory design process, a developer needs to come in and ask what's needed, meet people, and then add those uses to the ground floor. And if you read the Virginia Pilot article on Railroad District the other day, the thing that stuck out to me was that the residents in Park Place said, "This developer came and met with us and asked us what we needed and then put some of those things in place." And that was, that was a really good thing to see. On to the next, street network. And so we're working on our multimodal Norfolk and our transportation plans, but the more and more we start to work on areas of the city where we're developing really new streets and new neighborhoods, it's the street network and the hierarchy of it that drives everything. And so what we need to ask developers to do is to make sure every single multifamily housing connects directly with a sidewalk. So if you can imagine projects that have come before the city where people were parking in a garage or in a parking lot, going in a back door, and the developer or the architect always assumed that people would go from the car to the apartment, those aren't contributing in the way that we aspire to. So we want porches connected to sidewalks and we want people seeing people's faces. We want to make sure all projects maintain our street grid. We are working so hard in the city to reconnect streets that were cut off and so we want to make sure that we support projects that, we don't allow them to vacate streets. We want to keep that street network really strong. And so when we have large projects come to us that are over four acres, we need to make the request that they be subdivided into smaller parcels. And that doesn't always mean a city road has to go through, but it needs to, a block needs to be broken up so that it's a comfortable block to walk around. So these are all kind of common sense things and when you start to think about yourself walking around, they all make sense, but it's just something that really needs to be stated and then enforced. So a really healthy neighborhood has a diversity of building types. They're not a monoculture. If you walk in a neighborhood that has the same building repeated over and over, doesn't always feel good. We should, we would say that there should be no full-block buildings and if something needs to be that large, it needs to be designed to be broken into sections. Developments of more than 100 units should have more than one building type. There are some parts of this document that are really pushing the envelope and this is probably one that's starting to push the envelope. And so we'll probably get some feedback on this, but this is something that we think would really improve quality of life in those large apartments. They should be compatible with their neighborhood. So let's say a large apartment building is situated in what is currently predominantly a single-family neighborhood. What we would say is, large apartment building, as it turns the corner, maybe we start to break down the scale and break down the scale so that it fits together with the neighborhood so we don't have large building right next to a single-family home. Scrolling through, this is probably one of the most important principles, dwelling as a mirror of self. So people naturally see their homes as a reflection of themselves. It's directly tied to a person's self-image and therefore their self-confidence. If your house is beautiful and well-maintained, it makes you feel good and it gives you hope and the promise of upward mobility. And conversely, if it's poorly constructed and maintained, dampens the spirits and decreases the opportunity or the capacity for upward mobility. And actually, if you go back just for a second, the picture on the left is Digstown. It was taken in 1993, Ray Kandros took this, and in 1995, he took the picture on the right, which I know is grainy, but he took it in 95 and it's been scanned and scanned. But I thought it was really important because what the city did and NRHA did is they added porches to these apartments. And the man sitting there always wanted to have plants and they never felt like they could have plants in the yard because they'd be stolen or broken. And once the porch was added and people were facing each other and could have conversations, he felt safe enough to add his hanging baskets and start his bed in the front yard. And if you see down beyond, his neighbor started growing plants and this whole culture and community started to be lifted up. So good self-image, beautiful house, people start to feel better.
Mel, can I say something?
Yeah.
The plants.
Yes.
Beautification says a lot about your neighborhood. It's more of what you project is what you're going to get. Even with the new park that's coming up on Princess Anne Road, we're doing what's called the fruit trees.
Yes.
That's never been thought of like that in a park. We're doing the fruit trees. So the feedback was, well, the children are going to do this and the children are going to do that. You don't know that. And you have to try, you have to dare sometimes to do something different. So what we did was attach the fruit trees with cooking lessons and partnering with other organizations to say, "Here's how we're going to utilize the fruit trees," and that it becomes an asset to the community rather than a hindrance.
Yes.
But you have to be willing to try something, so, thank you.
And the city, and the city tried this and it's had a really positive effect. Okay, on to the next principle, I think round number four. This is something that's really intuitive to all of us, but when you see the map, it really makes sense. Why is it so important to have these neighborhood-scale blocks? So if you look at all of the blocks in green, and so you can tell this is downtown Norfolk, Brambleton, The Hague, everything in green is less than three acres. You can imagine what it feels like to walk around those blocks and tree-lined streets and then you can see blocks that are much larger in size. So if you picture people walking around four blocks, how many chances do you have to run into someone and say hello and have a conversation versus how many chances do you have when you're walking around a mega-block? So our street grid again is so important. So on to the next slide. Perimeter block. Again, this is intuitive, but buildings need to be placed around the perimeter, fronts have to face the streets, things that we don't want to see need to be screened in the middle, our trash, our parking lots, buildings, and again, not black and white, these are guidelines, so gray. About 75% of the perimeter of a block should be lined with buildings. 75%, 70% of the facade should be active. And then we don't want to go any farther than about 70 feet without having a building or it feels like a gap in the street. It feels uncomfortable to walk by. So if you imagine taking any of those buildings away, you would know that it starts to feel uncomfortable walking down that street. So moving along. Here's where you can really see it and this is a building that talks about block security. So instead of fences and things that make people afraid to walk down the street, let's line the blocks with buildings and so a friendly fence. And then any place where we do need to have fences, set them back, here, here, put nice landscaping in front of them. And then when people have this nice image, behavior changes and this is a simple change or a request that can be made. So on to the next slide. This is a sketch we included because it was part of the design charade working on the Snyder Block just up the street. Streets should be well landscaped and lined with shade trees. The goal is to create a pedestrian-friendly street space that will foster social interaction. When we are developing new blocks, again, the size of the street, the amount of traffic it's carrying, the speed of that traffic should start to determine where the building is placed. And this is so important because we have to buffer from roads with higher speeds. So in this particular block, we're looking at City Hall, which is pretty fast traffic, leaving the mall, heading towards the interstate. It was important to have a wide sidewalk, lots of landscape buffer, and then start the building. Coming along St. Paul's, again, a larger landscape buffer, a shelter, transit station. Then along Plum Street, we could tuck in public amenities into this private space like Bike Share. So the amount of traffic and the character of the street then needed to determine where the building is stacked. So plan for the public realm before establishing the building face. So on to the next one. Streetscapes and public open space. This is our hope and dreams for the future when all of the streets connect through St. Paul's and you really see equity in landscaping and connectivity between the east and west sides of the city. So that interconnected network of pedestrian-scale streets and open space. And then on to the next slide. Amenities and public open space. This is where the council requests really started. You asked us to tell you what we thought amenity, what amenities should be included when multifamily projects come forward. And what we're suggesting is that projects need to have amenities for the public and amenities for the residents. So they need to have both. Want to call your attention to some items in the guidelines that you'll see where we've been very specific, as in any building over 24 units or over three stories should have an elevator. They should have conditioned lobbies and stairwells and a nice entrance. They should not be garden-style apartments with open breezeways. And that goes back to just a kind of human dignity issue. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. Amenities can include, should include open space. This is an image from St. Paul's with water management and then you can go ahead and scroll ahead. And that building placement should be based on the street type. So the scale, the volume of traffic, and the character of the street determines where the building should be set back. So you see a mixed-use street where we want to have outdoor seating, used to be a wide sidewalk so someone, let's say a couple, someone in a wheelchair could hold hands with someone else and pass a neighbor or someone with a baby carriage on the other side and we want to build spaces for people to interact in that way. If we move down to the next slide, we can scroll through these pretty quickly. You can see the difference between that and just a neighborhood, small-scale neighborhood street where we can have a six-foot-wide sidewalk, resilient landscaping, and we can just scroll on through. Avenue and Boulevard, a mixed-use street. And we'll move on to the last principle, which is really the design of the architecture. And I won't get into too many details other than saying that in order to create a really lively environment, there needs to be a variety of architectural styles designed by many different architects. So when you see really large town center that's been developed by one architect or one developer, in an older city like Norfolk, we want to see that authentic mixture of styles so it doesn't seem, just kind of stop, yeah, plop down. So variety is really essential. It separates real neighborhoods and communities from projects. So we're trying to encourage innovation, but the result should be recognized as Norfolk. And this is an AIA award-winning mixed-income housing project on that image. Scrolling down, we want to make sure that windows are well-composed and we can just scroll through these entrance lobbies, communal terraces, apartment doors make people feel good when you walk into them. That can be done in a very traditional and a very contemporary way. Natural wood tones make things warm and inviting, porches. So as you scroll down to the bottom, when we put it all together, we as a city want to encourage building homes and neighborhoods instead of products and projects. And that results in a safe neighborhood with a sense of community and it's always a mixed-income community. So you have your guidelines here. You all are the first to see these and we have included in bold anything where we do feel like it's pushing the envelope a little bit, so please review those pieces carefully. And please get back to us and let us know what you think. We have worked with some of the builders, multifamily builders in this area already to solicit their feedback. We will be working with even more of them as we move ahead and the Tidewater Building Association has reached out and we will work with their builders as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
As soon as Mr. Smigle comes, I want to report a resolution. Any questions for Mel while we wait for Mr. Smigle? Any questions? Mr. Smigle needs to come because we're going to lose one of our members. Any questions for Mel?
Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, great, great presentation.
So can I point out that Mel got a clap but George didn't get a clap?
Oh, George, that's all right. Thank you, George. All right, so let's do council concerns until Mr. Smigle and Mrs. Graves come back and then we're going to report a resolution. So Mr. Riddick, start with you, sir. If Mr. Smigle comes, we'll suspend and come back because Ms. Graves has to leave, but I want to report a resolution when the full council is here. But you can start with your concerns.
I think we need to, I was mentioning this to the manager a couple of weeks ago, I think we need to create an afternoon and weekend program for girls. Fair programs for boys, but no character building for girls. And we could use our existing facilities and have afternoon and evening programs for girls. And my neighborhood, which is Huntersville, there are five girls to every boy. And if we did this and did it properly, it would have a positive impact on our tax dollars, educational tax dollars by creating character practices that will eliminate discipline time wasted on just public safety tax dollars. Girls becoming more susceptible to pedicrimes, including drugs, and also the public health tax dollars. With girls, you're talking about teenage pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, and hygiene. And that's sort of, I don't know if what Dr. Jones was saying, but we really need to do something and stop just going, you know, year to year and not recognizing the fact that girls are a very important part of the community.
Here, here.
Also, I've got a lot of calls, there was a, several budgets ago, there was money funded for a statue, paying tribute to the Norfolk 17, was to be erected around the New Circuit Court. Now there are only nine remaining members of that group. And also, this is an awful time of this period in our history. And so I don't know who deep-sixed it because I've actually met before the designer. So somebody has deep-sixed it.
Mr. Riddick is still, still in the works, but let's suspend, Mr. Riddick, come back. Dr. Fowler or Mr. Bull, report a resolution.
Yeah, I guess we'll, I'll turn it over to...
Okay, report a resolution.
Clerk Bull for the resolution.
And then we can make comments, we vote and well, it's crazy, I'll leave.
Before you have a resolution that we're getting ready to adopt, a resolution concerning the appointment of Dr. Sharon I. Birdsong as the superintendent of Norfolk Public Schools. Adopt a resolution, Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Mrs. Graves.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Dr. Alexander.
All right. Dr. Fowler, any comments you'd like to make, and then we...
We just would like to thank Norfolk Public Schools for the appointment of Dr. Birdsong. I've had a chance to work with her. When I came on and in her acting capacity, we're very excited to work with her. We're glad that the school board picked such a capable and passionate individual about Norfolk Public Schools. So we were just happy, we felt the resolution from council was a good message to send to the school board in Norfolk Public Schools, that we appreciate their appointment, and we look forward to working with them to make the public school system as good as it can be.
All right, thank you. Any other members who'd like to...
Any other council concerns before we go into closed?
All right. Mr. Riddick, you want to finish?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is this, we recognize the deficit that we face in this upcoming budget, and so while we're dealing with developers, branch show, and others, we can't do anything for free. We've got to get every dime that we can get.
Craig is shaking his head.
No, sir. Any other council concerns before we go into close? Okay, Mr. Bull.
I move that members of the council assemble in formal like a closing meeting on March 3rd, 2020, at 6:17 PM in the 10-floor conference room of the City Hall Building in the City of Norfolk, for the purposes which are set out in clauses one and three of subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended. Clause three, discussion of the disposition of publicly-held real property in the Shore Drive Little Creek Road area and the downtown area, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the public body, and discussion of prospective candidates for boards and commissions. Mrs. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Graves.
Shh.
Mrs. Johnson.
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan.
Aye.